All right, we want to call our Cleveland County Emergency Communication District D. It's an order, want to welcome everybody. Mr. Mark Chu. So, roll call, Laura Cobb?
Here.
In and Owen?
Sir.
Terry Hendricks?
Sir.
Roger Heel?
Here.
No one asked to speak as far as a citizen of this region? Anybody that's issue as board member if y'all have anything?
You're on.
Comment? Okay. We got a minute.
I did. On the house, on the?
Down one more?
It was, I think it was tied in with the one that she sent for the county. You get the one for the?
Yeah.
I thought they were good. I mean, I clicked on it, I don't know if they ever come up.
Okay. So, um, new business approvals, do you want to do that?
Most likely.
Any discussion? All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
That was all ayes, right?
Yes.
Most of you carries. Oh. Crystal? Do you want to take over this or you?
Yeah, I am.
Okay.
So, Lisa and I worked together on this. I know that we had some questions about the frequency that the 9-1-1 board needed to meet, so we reached out to this state board that asked if that would be set in our ballots, which we, or under the commission. So, we reached out to Jason and said, okay, if the commission desired to change the 9-1-1 meetings, how would we go about doing that? So, he's looked at the resolution that created the meeting minutes, and that was set right after the election in 2022, and said that if you guys, if it was your desire not to meet as frequently, you could pass a resolution in the 9-1 meeting to change that. So, we have no formal resolution as far as the 9-1 meetings. We just fell in line with what the commission was doing.
My resolution, if I may, when y'all set your meeting schedule for the commission, it was after the 9-1 board meeting had met that day. The next month's meeting, there was discussion just to stick with the schedule of the commission meetings and the thirty minutes before. There was never a formal resolution or anything done like that, and just agreed we continue meeting on that schedule. So, my advice, if the 9-1-1 board, sitting as this board, wants to change its schedule, then you would need to do a resolution setting forth the schedule of how you want to meet as a 9-1 board, separate from the state and the commission. What's your rating of that?
Well, I'm here anyway, so. I mean, I see, we really don't usually have anything except for plus a budget behind it. So, most of the things that we do are just day and day outside. But, again, I'm here, so.
You know, I guess.
The only thing, my only thing is that we don't know from month to month. If something did come up, then we weren't scheduled for a meeting.
For two months.
I mean, it would be two months. And I'm not comfortable, not, even though, thank goodness, we don't have anything. But who's going to say we don't next month? So, I'm not comfortable myself changing.
So, you're thinking, oh, there's a lot of this?
Yes.
Okay. Well, did you provide anybody with this right here?
No, we're not. That's just the resolution. We just pulled that just for reference, to make sure it wasn't.
If you decide any one of you commissioners want to add to the agenda today or add to a later date, if y'all want to look at that, we can add it.
That's the resolution that the commission adopted to set its schedule, which you will do again following the November election. Because each term, each term of the commission sets its meeting schedule.
That's the way I remember it. We can change them at each election.
Every two years.
Yeah.
All right, so, I'll let y'all take a look at that, and then reports from staff.
Okay, so, yeah, I provided the January 23 report. Just our call volume was slightly increased. We were really busy in January with weather. We actually, we did activate the ESC twice for weather-related incidents. And, you know, we, we, we stay activated at the ESC until all weather is cleared. So, we did do that the fourteenth and the fifteenth, just to make sure it went on until the sixteenth, actually. And that was about it. We issued nineteen addresses last month. So, it was, we've been issuing a lot of addresses. And social media updates, meetings with our staff, and validation for our work and grant work.
Didn't that mean that our association needs to be, I know some of them are kind of complacent, but more being that I'm aware of.
Yes, we, we now have a subject matter expert for this with medics with Act of Non-Monies. So, he has said that he is going to get some of our departments. And it was a farce in error on Act of Non-Monies. When it goes out of our cap, we really, we don't have the means to adjust anything from the Act of Non-Monies on. Anyway, some kind of technical issue was going on, and so they fixed it. In the meantime, our, we've had a couple of humans in, and it's just a matter of if they tab or if they enter their address. So, I think they can probably tab it and send out the title location, and then they come back and say, oh, oh, no, I said the title location. And just readjust it, but it was a combination of those.
Over my head, yeah, I covered who's contacted, that, I called Bernie, and then it was seven.
Yes, I did. I spoke with Bernie, and then, like I said, we had one that involved medics, and he was somehow dealt with the Act of Non-Monies. So, I gave him, and I said, well, you can just call them, and you just fix that for us. Because each entity has a separate Act of Non-Monies account, and we don't have access to that. We just provide, they provide us a code, and we put it into our cats and that application. So, it was, it was very technical, and we both might understand as well.
Something I didn't understand, because he kept showing, but he said, it's telling us here that actually their address is down the road, two houses down. It was parking up at the top of the road and not getting them down to the right location.
We had a lot of that, especially with the postal services somehow validating specific addresses. We had had the worst time with mapping on that. Is that, you know, even when you put in the mountain center on GPS, we can't just provide our physical address for someone to come here. We have to tell them, don't plug it in your GPS, because it would take you, you know, off to no man's land. And so, anyways, it's kind of the same issues with that, is that it's the, it's the.
I mean, like, it's right now.
Yes.
We didn't fuck that, you?
We didn't.
And it goes to the other?
Any questions? With the other?
I don't think so. I had a little issue with our, um, oh goodness, I can't remember the vendor that we went with, with our January return fee.
You talking about the?
The vendor.
Laura and Owen, it's my name.
Steve?
No. The vendor that we purchased the January one.
Oh.
And we had to, I had to recreate another PO and send another PO. So, he assures me that we're here in two weeks. So, I told him that if it was not here in two weeks, that I would find another vendor to use. I'm just not sure why I'm having such a hard time.
Yeah.
That's been.
You didn't like it back on the chair.
Yeah. It was, I believe it was in April that we submitted the order, and that's what I told him. I said, well, because I checked back with him in December, because I really do trust him on top of it. But he was like, yeah, you know, I'm not sure what happened. I'll get back with you. And I called, oh, no. So, anyways, he said that it's on order. I did check with the vehicle. They said that it should be here April as well, so. I don't know. I don't have anything else.
Mr. Heel?
No.
Any old business?
Yes, sir.
Did you hear about the fire buyers getting some bad linens for the, say it?
I think you've rented by me?
Yeah.
To get a quote, and I have not done so yet.
So, there's no set of beds that haven't been set up yet?
There is. We didn't, when we first put the building, we got our wall of furniture in. It was kind of, there was really actually no place to put them.
Okay.
So, I think we may have a recon beak or something somewhere, a super ramp or something, from what I recall.
So, put it up, or you know, just get some baggies and put at least the linen in there?
Right.
And, and, but they said that, you know, like, at the National Guard or somebody like that, they bring them on to sleep in.
Yeah, they do. And we had, you know, we had numerous people here, or we, the engineers, all of this. I mean, just whoever is needed for that event, we bring in. But we, I did tell Emily Brown, we are going to rekey those lockers downstairs. And we're going to keep a lot of those linens in the thong of the lockers, just to have access to them, so that when they're needed, they're back there. So, we did talk about that, though. I'll try to get a, try to put that on the test, as to get that done, if we're quoting that.
All right. Anyone discussion out? I'll entertain motion to adjourn.
Not an emergency.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye? All right, we will call our meeting's order. Want to welcome all of our guests. Good to have all of you. This time, roll call, Ms. Laura Cobb?
Here.
In and Owen?
Here.
Terry Hendricks?
Here.
Roger Heel?
Here.
We have Quorum, this time will stand as, let's leave this. This call, I think, is Phil Hunt, bless him, act one. Salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, thank you for having us here tonight. Father, just be with us. That will make God a decision, Father. Father, I pray for our nation and our county. Father, I pray that you will be with those that have lost loved ones. Father, just uplift us in the spirit of joy, and take everyone home safely tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
We have no one to call, as far as I know, to approach about speaking, as far as citizens speaking. This time will ask, Sheriff, do you have anything?
I don't have any, but.
I'm a written interventionist.
No.
Okay. Mike with Water Party, I think you said you answered, sorry.
Yes. You. Hey, y'all, the city, the money, the offer money, give y'all an update. Everything that a lot of we committed to do with the offer money is done. There is approximately fifteen thousand dollars left of that money. Came in a little under budget. There's Road 689, there's eight residents on it. Those eight residents have agreed to put forth forty thousand dollars. If I can put fifteen of the school y'all in the offer for that also, that's going to lead ten to fifteen that the Water Party is going to pay for also, in order to get those eight residents water. And there is 689, basically north of Rammer. That'd be the, that'd be the best use to get most people water or what for maintenance of that money.
So, that's on the right away, do right away water?
Yes. Run the maintenance up. It's good we all just were giving you the update. Everything we committed to do, we have done. It's completely has water, and people using water.
You need a resolution on the offer money, or do I actually need that?
I don't think you actually need a resolution, because the resolution that was passed was that seven hundred thousand dollars should be used to afford projects. So, I think this was just a gesture, to make sure you're all okay with the, with the left there. Remains being spent that way.
Make sure everybody the issue of what they're going to do and what we can do, and if we can use that, that's the, that'd be the best use for that. Keep in mind, that is somewhat dependent on them. That's a verbal agreement. For them to do that, I need them to actually do that and make this work. But just good we all, once they do that, we'll do our part.
Okay. Sounds good.
Y'all's good, I'm good.
All right. So, you got any kind of regulations or anything, just understood, right?
I just wanted y'all to know where it was going, basically.
Uh, no bid openings, awards and presentations, schedules, public hearings, consent agenda.
I have one, I don't know.
Everything on the consent agenda was initial, initial, except for Resolution Number Five, and it's concerning the dump trucks, so we'll move that to, uh, H. I'm just going to put the dump trucks. New business. I make a motion to accept.
Second.
Any other discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Most of you carries. Okay. Moving down to new business. Whereas voters, new business, new business item A, whereas voters will soon consider Amendment One, which will be on the ballot during the 2024 primary election held on March 5, 2024, and whereas the legislature regularly passes local laws and local constitutional amendments that impact the services provided to the county residents as well as the mechanisms for funding these services. And whereas some of these taxpayer-funded services include law enforcement, education, fire protection, ambulance services, the regulation of alcoholic beverages, and economic development. And whereas since 1984, the Alabama Constitution has required that no legislation be considered by the legislature until both of the state annuals budget are passed and delivered to the governor. And whereas there is an exception that allows the legislature to consider other matters ahead of the budgets by adopting a budget isolation resolution by a vote of not less than three-fifths of a quorum present. And whereas the language of this exception has been interpreted various ways since 1984 and has generated lawsuits in recent years over how many votes are needed to adopt the budget isolation resolution. And whereas if the court finds that a local budget isolation resolution was adopted improperly, it could result in that local law being challenged on procedural grounds, even if the local law otherwise passed both chambers and became law. And whereas Amendment One would allow bills and local constitutional amendments to be considered by the legislature without the adoption of the BIR, Budget Isolation Resolution, removing a procedural step from the legislative process. And whereas the Association of County Commissioners of Alabama has adopted a resolution encouraging Alabamians to vote yes to Amendment One on March the fifth, 2024, now therefore be resolved by the Cleveland County Commission that it encourages the citizens of the county to go to the polls on March the fifth, 2024, and make their voices heard on Amendment One. I entertain motion?
I entertain motion.
Ms. Call makes the motion, and Mr. Heel second. Any discussion? All in, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Most of you carries, you have a motion. New business item B, whereas Cleveland County Commission has received a new shared use agreement from JSU, National State University, whereas the agreement simplifies the original agreement into one document and allows for a rate of seven thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars per quarter for a term of three years, beginning February the seventh, 2024. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission resolves to authorize its chairman to sign a new agreement on behalf of the county. I don't say it's February twenty. Did I say something wrong? You said seven, didn't you? Or maybe I didn't forgive you. I didn't catch that. I'm like, oh.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Most of you carries. I guess it's my anniversary on the seventh. I've been making thirty-seven years.
Yeah, probably.
And I'm just still in love, you know? Is that your birthday, babe?
Did you not bring any cake?
It's not gonna be big cake here, Laura. You got the kitchen. I told my wife, don't make a cake either. I don't need it.
New business item C, whereas Cleveland County Commission owns the new Hopewell School Building and property, whereas the commission does not have any use for the building, whereas a nonprofit 501(c)(3) group known as Friends of New Hopewell Schoolhouse is willing to take possession of the property. Whereas the group hopes to maintain the integrity of the structure and possibly make improvements for community usage, including reunions and community gatherings. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission resolves to surplus the new Hopewell Schoolhouse property, donate the property to Friends of the New Hopewell 501(c)(3) director, directs the county to our adjacent over to draw up a quit, quit claim deed to facilitate the property transfer and authorize the chairman to decide, say.
I'm in motion.
I'll take it. It don't matter. Just sort of discuss. Yeah. I think we'll give issue real estate. Any discussion? I got a question. Yes, sir. Do we need to put something in the deed where if this organization goes out of business, it reverts back to us?
We have to do it if those submissions design.
Does that, does that what we normally do? I mean, I don't. But would they need to amend this resolution? You would get the motion, you get the motion.
Yeah, but I would say, when I speak in the resolution, I would say that we have to draw up a quickling deed with reversionary language to facilitate the property transfer.
Are you, hold on a second, hold on a second. Are you willing to do that amendment first?
Yes.
Okay. Are you okay with that amendment? Yes, sir.
In the, let me find it here. You have to, you have to make that into the, what it approved. And it is right now approved to go back to. Who's Beverly with, what's that, non-profit they did?
Beverly Case.
Yeah, Beverly Case.
It's a story.
Artsy.
Yeah, yeah. Right now, if we dissolve in any manner, it's to go to them the way it's written up now. So, I just, here it is.
Okay. So, we suggestion, show them on that?
Really depends on what the commission wants. If they want it to revert to the commission if they dissolve, the deed will control their internal boxes, because you're the ones transferring the property.
The history of the society.
I mean, as long as, as long as it's a 501(c) or somebody, I'm guilty with it. But I don't want somewhat twenty years that some individual ends up with it.
It cannot go to an individual. It has to be some done properly.
For the non-profit, the, the.
Yes. Y'all just want to leave the original resolution, and everybody happy with that? You give that?
I have to, it's internal office.
Because they've already had that set up, and we, you've already got that set up to the status, right?
Yes, it's in the bylaws.
In their bylaws.
I love that.
That it will go to them.
That's correct.
Okay.
If I keep fishing, I'll die in there. Everybody good with the resolution as it raised?
If, if I may, just for the commission's comfort level. Sir, would you be willing to send me a copy of those bylaws? That I can then put in our file? So, if it comes up as a question in future, I'll have it with our copy of the deed. That's the way I do it. So, we'll take out the amendment.
Yeah. No change. Resolution is as we're in. We're in twenty. No, I'm sorry. That's not, that's. Dang. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
You two, aye?
Yep.
Okay, most carries. New business item D, whereas Cleveland County Sheriff is asking for the support of the Cleveland County Commission on a local legislation item, whereas the sheriff states that he has spoken to Senator Ray Price about the possibility of the sheriff's department implementing an increase in pistol permit fees, and out-of-state civil process fees, and a change that will allow the retention of jail funds, funds. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission resolves to express its support in seeking these changes.
I'm in motion.
Perfect. I'm motion and second amendment. Oh, any discussion? Yes, sir. I thought the jail fund deal, we already talked about that, and that can be done.
That's just a decision to the legislation to give.
Everything broke the legislation. So, how do you know?
I talked to them, and that's what, as they wed that up, the, the law. Because they're already open law on it, but it has to have a rebound. We're just getting past a resolution to do it.
He's asking, you're just asking for our support, or he can give it back?
Yes.
Agree, huh? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, amendments, right?
Yep. Ryan, can I bounce back in?
Yes, sir.
I'll just show this to this.
Only because you want.
The, the resolution. It's fine. I'm going to give you my email address, and you can just email it back.
Okay. I want to keep Chris, and like, if somebody liked the copy for you.
I would like to say on behalf of the county commission, we appreciate the gentleman to step down and to say, for the question.
Well, I think it's important that we do, and I appreciate all of you making that.
New business item E. Whereas Cleveland County Commission adopted Resolution Number 5177, approving the employee handbook prepared by Ms. Hope Hicks on September 21, 2021. And whereas it recently has been brought to submission's attention that there appears to be internal inconsistency with regard to employee paying during official closing as set forth in Section M, implement whether and are a declared emergency. And whereas it is the intention of Cleveland County Commission to ensure that any perceived inconsistencies, discrepancy be rectified and clarified to the maximum extent possible, now therefore be resolved with Cleveland County Commission does hereby remove in its entirety the second sentence of paragraph M, period five, period, from the employee handbook with the effective date of February 20, 2024. Ms. Call makes motion, we'll accept. Mr. Hendricks, second. Any discussion?
No, I don't.
Yes, sir.
Is that going to affect, pass the, you know?
That's why it has the effective date of today. You know, it goes forward from today.
Yes, sir, Mr. Hendricks.
And that, that's going to solve our problem. That problem, yes, sir. Okay. That's going to fix the handbook, yes, in that regard, yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. All in. Yes, sir.
I don't, I don't agree with the fact that closing your office, we have to pay everybody in the county for that two hours. These offices wouldn't close, you know? So, I don't understand that. Maybe just we can, just we can understand that.
But I don't think we've agreed to pay for those two hours yet.
If an employee was working, they're getting paid anyway. It's the employees that were not required to come in. The problem was, the initial paragraph of this section says that if an emergency is declared, then employees who decide to can use their annual leave to bring them to their regulations.
then employees who decide to can use their annual leave to bring them to their regulation at the work hours for the day. The section further discusses critical emergency service personnel must report to work, and that could be nine one one, EMA, highway department, and then they'll get, they're gonna get paid anyway. The problem comes up in subsection five, where it says, if an employee is not required to work during an implement weather and or declared emergency closing, he or she will receive administrative pay for the regularly scheduled working hours. So it's not consistent with the original paragraph that says they would have to use leave time. First off, the policy says they have to use leave time, then it says those that are not required to show up are gonna get administrative pay. Since that is internally inconsistent, I recommended that the resolution at this time for the situation was to utilize whichever one is most in favor of the employee, so we don't have any employee complaints. And going forward, by removing the administrative pay sentence, it takes out the internal inconsistency. So for any future events, if they want to get paid when there's an emergency closing, they have to take personally.
Ah, okay.
But since this came up for this last one, that it was two hours, and an employee has asked for that administrative pay, I believe any employee that was not required to report to work as a critical emergency service person should receive that two hours of administrative pay because our policy provides for it.
That applies only to the courthouse employees.
But I would imagine it would apply to any of, any employee that's not a critical service person that didn't have to show up.
That doesn't, and that's before any of you here were here, I think. That's something that's been, that's been established, that always given me being chairman or being right there in the courthouse to make the decision whether or not. But we're not essential.
We didn't necessarily wouldn't have to, you know, worry about coming in or not, but it never agreed that we were gonna pay. I think when it got changed up, it's when the new policy procedure handbook was done.
Yeah.
So, so they're gonna hold our foot to the fire for the two hours, is that right? Is that what we're saying, the employees want the two hours?
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't, you know, I think that's gonna be a decision that we have to decide.
Okay.
Beyond this, how you gonna, how you plan on fixing those, those two hours?
It's essentially two hours for everybody, because even the people that worked those two hours would get the additional two hours, correct?
No, if the ones that worked were designated as critical personnel, they're just gonna get their regular pay, they're not gonna get the two hours of administrative pay.
So they're, they're only getting, they're gonna get paid for working, and the people that didn't work those two hours are gonna get paid.
Two hours of administrative pay.
Okay. And the charmer charge change is also.
Because it says if an employee is not required to work, they receive administrative pay for the regularly scheduled working hours during the period of closing. That's the sentence that this resolution is removing.
Yes, sir.
What's the definition of administrative pay? Why is that different than the regular?
I didn't write it. It's just, it's referred to as administrative pay because they're not actually working.
I mean, administrative to me is like supervision or.
Or department.
Department head. It's not.
That's not how it's written yet, it's just, you know, they'll get administrative pay, which is basically for them not having to show up during those regularly scheduled working hours.
Okay, we're not bringing this up tonight though, right? We're just changing the book.
You're gonna have to address it probably one day, anyway, right now, we're just addressing the book, or just changing the policy. Ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Most who cares. Whereas Cleveland County Commission is aware of the opportunity to pursue funds available for brief replacement on County Road sixty five through a congressional directed fund provision of fiscal year two thousand twenty five. Whereas in order to receive funds, it will be necessary for the Alabama Department of Transportation to provide a letter state, state in support of this project, which is not on the state transportation improvement program. Whereas the commission must also agree to a twenty five percent, a two hundred fifty thousand dollar match of the cost of the project provided the federal appropriation is received, therefore, the Cleveland County Commission resolves to max the fund for the project if received and request at Austin without to provide a letter of support.
I make a motion.
Mr. Khan makes a motion.
Second.
Mr. Owens is second. Any discussion? Mr. Hendricks.
Where are we looking to put the quarter million dollars from?
The two hundred fifty will probably have to come out on my last, no, you come in at in twenty five.
Gas tank time.
Yeah. But I mean, you know, you're talking about a hundred, a million dollar project.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not knocking the project, I just want her for the money.
Yeah, I, I'll have a problem there.
Okay, I'm good.
All ready to vote? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Most who cares. Whereas, this is G, whereas two commissioners are requesting that a portion of their discretionary funds be allocated for use by the Chamber of Commerce, whereas Commissioner Mino will like to allocate two thousand dollars, and Commissioner Laura Cobb will like to allocate three thousand dollars. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission agrees to allow allocations of this discretionary funds for this purpose.
I make a motion.
Mr. Laura Cobb, Mr. Roger Hill is second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any votes? Aye, say aye. Moving to the next thing will be the dump trucks. Thanks, I'm sorry. Whereas the Cleveland County engineer has explained that the time for rotation of dump trucks is approaching, whereas, whereas in order to be on the list to purchase two dump trucks off the state bid list, the county engineer needs commission approval, therefore, the Cleveland County Commission agrees to allow the county to air for zoo, pursue the purchase of two dump trucks, which will receive in January of two thousand twenty five.
I second.
Any discussion? Mr. Hill?
I'm good with it as long as they're on the function of the bed. You remember what we got into, about five months, the bed on the, the dump truck.
Oh, yeah. I got you. Yes.
What are the two dump trucks you replacing?
It would be the, the Mack trucks and the Keynote trucks. But I would put them in, it would be March twenty five options, we would have option those that we would take.
I only had one day to do the rest of the rotation now. So they're in rotation?
Well, yes, that's what it was, that's what it is. But they'll, they'll go with the March twenty five option, we'll, we'll take. March fifteenth is deadline to drop them, crossing the current price, March fifteenth is the deadline, that's my assurance. Not gonna take the delivery to January twenty five, and then March twenty five, they can go to the delivery. So that only will be a, you know, not that.
Mr. Hendricks.
I thought when we bought the two small dump trucks, we dropped down to one truck.
The, we did at that time, but I got, I got both of them, we didn't put back in the dump truck. And that's what I was trying, trying to get with them back on rotation.
So we're still dropping one truck, so I'm adding the two, we still got two trucks, and then we just add two more?
We've got two more, yes.
Because I'm not so much good.
Yeah, I mean, my thesis is to give the, to give the.
I'm not gonna pull this one.
Intentionally, but that's my, that's what I was trying to do, is get two trucks as part of the rotation, so.
All right, ready to vote? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Most who cares. I think that gets this three, reports of staff. Ms. Copen?
Um, nothing really unusual, um, of course, our CDs, um, mature in the last month. Um, one of them, the one that has our reserve account money in it, is, um, rolled into a D C D for the higher interest rates, and we're, we're good there. Uh, the other one, the money was moved into a fiduciary account in order to, um, pay for the bridge replacement on head rate at sixty three. And, um, that's probably two thirds to three quarters done, I would say, as far as paying out, it's getting, it's getting pretty close, before I get paid out, yes. And, uh, other than that, um, it's, we've, we've had our computers updated the last couple of weeks. Mostly last week, uh, our accounting software, everything's updated. My computer's crashed, so we're in the process of getting every care right now, it's not there yet, but Jason took it home with him, so hopefully I'll be back up and running. I've been unable to, pretty, I mean, I was able to log in from home, I'm sure I can work remotely using the little Windows computer, because I can log into her PC from home and work remotely, so I worked yesterday at home, was able to at least get some of the problems here today. And then, um, today I posted it, did some kitchen, I did some filing, things like that, to try and keep things moving. Other than that, um, we're good, uh, Crystal did order a external hard drive for myself and for her and for Elizabeth, I think she worked more. I'm not sure. But, um, so that we wouldn't have this issue again, uh, because I could, I could have actually lost all of my Excel files and all my documents like that. But fortunately, we did not lose them, it was just, you had to copy it over to the drive and then it's gonna restart. But that will save a lot of problems, we could set those up to back up our system, our CDs, um, every day, just on an automatic basis. So that will save us some trouble. The hard drives are pretty inexpensive there, now you can get an external hard drive, it just looks like flash drive, they're very small. So that's a, that's a no brainer that we would do that. Other than that, that's pretty much for my part.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, I just want to go back.
Mr. Hendricks, ask, ask for you again, I'm sorry.
This is before you came, we actually passed a resolution that we would get the agenda and consent agenda, and I'm gonna just remember, I think like Wednesday before meeting, was there any way we can go back to that?
Yeah, they were, and we didn't wait till Tuesday this time, so that kind of is a bit of a bummer for us, I think. But we just got with, with having all the papers and everything going on this task week, with things being shut down, just got a little bit behind this time, but, you know, so I can, I can actually look back on Wednesday.
You, you can look up the resolution, I have crystal.
Yes, sir, it is, it's got a certain amount of hours on that schedule for it. I'll try to start making sure that those are on Wednesday. It was never mine, taking part, big Friday for it to come out, but then things just happened this time, and then our system was shut down for basically on and off our whole day, and then part of the other day, so we just kind of, um.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have one. Has anybody got a chance to look at the proposed, uh, financial, county financial apartment? Anybody look at that?
Well, I'd like to be able to, uh, maybe get with Lisa and sit down and discuss that. I understand what we've been going through as far as the workload that she, that she's under and the comp time that she's having to work. I would like, I understand your proposal on this, but I would like to look at making you our chief financial officer and, uh, and look at going out and, uh, if we can't, then we'll try to get something lower, but I think we need, I think I would like to see us get a county administrator, and then they would be on the same wage as far as to the county commission, and I think that would take, for, for that kind of money, I'd like to see what's out there as far as what we really need. I mean, you know, I get a lot of phone calls and stuff, but I would just like to see what you think about that.
Well, what I think is that, if I have another county administrator, it is gonna cost you way more than the number I gave you, because that number plus benefits and everything is basically a pay grade eighteen, so it's gonna cost you a lot more than that to get another county administrator. Whereas if we were to get someone that can help me with the financial parts, so I don't get so down into the detail parts of the financials, that I can do more of an overview of things, and work on financials that we have to produce, then I think that would be the least, the lesser expensive of the ways to go, is to get someone that actually has a working knowledge of accounting, specifically governmental accounting, if you can find that person. And I realize that we're, would be trying, it would be a task to try to find someone with any kind of experience with that or with the right education that would at least make them trainable and fit that bill for that number that I gave you. But I still think that's the, the lesser expensive way to go, because.
Well, I, well, I think, I think you got our accounting, where that's all you focused on, that, focused on all the department heads and everything, where you was locked in on that. And we might not, we might not be able to get somebody with a, with a number, but, uh, that, you know, I mean, I'm just looking at what your proposal is, and that's what my approach is.
I understand, I do understand where you're, where you're coming from, um, and my, my take on it is just, I'm trying to find the least expensive way to cover the needs of the office. And so my thought is, if you free me up from all of the, being involved down with all the reconciliations and all the reporting and all those things that I do, some of that stuff, things are taken away from me, then I would be able to do more of the administration part of it. But that's, I'm, I'm willing to take suggestions, and I understand your suggestions. I just think it's gonna be really, really hard to find somebody that can do administration for that little, okay, it's just my opinion.
And, and then that way, you know, because in my, in my dream of dreams, when we was trying to set this up, was to where I didn't want you, you know, and, and, and what I see is, is the burden, and, and I know you hired the people that you hired. I'm just trying to get it where, what my idea was when we started this, is that someone would be in the wings to take that, but I don't see that person in the wings to take that. So I would like to just be able to take the opportunity for the commission to look at doing that, and if we can't do it, then, uh, we'll come back and we'll start with.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I know we've got to discuss administrator job in public, I know that, but can we go into second session and look at the whole department? And that can be able to talk about the other employees?
I, I don't think we can legally. We can't. Okay.
Well, let, let me, let me say this, and I can say this in general terms, that I have spoken to one of the commissioners, just one on one, and we talked about um, just getting a good list of all the duties, and I'm sure that there are duties that we have right now that are not on some of the job descriptions. And maybe looking at those jobs and seeing that it's just a matter of great organizing and making sure that the employees that we have in the positions that we have, they can do those things, and do those things on a regular basis, and be efficient with those job tasks. So maybe it's a matter of shifting some things around, maybe changing job descriptions a little bit, and that might be a good place to start. And then that might give you a better idea of which direction we need to go in.
Yeah, and, and that's, and that's what I'm saying, you know, when I look at that number, I know we won't get this, what we're talking about, but what I'm saying is, is let's just take a chance and see what's out there right now. I mean, I looked on, uh, that website on employees and stuff that's looking for stuff like that, that, that might bring in a new eye where when Lisa and him's working together, and then them two together can look at their department, you know, and sort of see, if we find somebody. You don't know if you're gonna find somebody or not, but that's my opinion, I just, I would just like to, uh, be able to do that.
Mission.
That's what I'm trying to say.
So what, the initial, is there, you're asking for a resolution now? So the resolution would be?
To, uh, look at, uh, what I talked about, making, uh, Lisa the chief financial officer, and then we would have an opportunity to look at, and we might not find them, and we might have to come back and re-group again. But I just want, or the commission is not all dependent, or it was like before, where you'd have two people that's on the same page. And that's what, that's what I'd like to do.
Okay.
And put a job description out for.
And it is true. Okay.
She said it's gonna, why, it's gonna be on this job description, correct?
Yeah.
On what we had to start with.
So, now, you be aware, this, if you do add this resolution, and you change her job description right now, and what she does, what she's doing right now would change, next month, she wouldn't be doing this part what she's doing. You see what I'm saying?
Well, I can let her, you need to look first, and then, then change later, maybe. Well, I can let her, you need to look first and then, then change later maybe, you know? That's what I was.
Yeah, but she not, I don't do nothing, but she'll have to have a lot of input to it. I, I, I just say if you're going to spend that kind of money, if you're going to spend that kind of money, let's look and see that we'll get what we want to get, that we want to get, where we have two people on the equal.
In other words, but would you, you want to start, make, make a resolution we use for advertising to search for an county administrator, Cleveland County? That would be yours. So, um, do we need to order that any certain way other than make, add that? I'm sorry, I know I put you on the spot.
I already know, sir.
Um, there would be, there would be a resolution to support what we.
Why am I getting down on?
So Mr. Owens, if you wanted to add a resolution to the meeting tonight, that, that would start, start us in advertising for a county administrator. Any other details that need to be added to that?
Just if there's a job description that will be added to that, request for applications. I figure it would be the standard publication that the HR department does.
Okay. Do you, do we have that? You have that? Okay. So. So we have a motion to add a resolution and that would be to start advertising for a Cleveland County administrator based on that job description right there by Mr. Owens. Do we have a second?
I'll start.
Got a second. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Don't a couple of us need to sit down and talk to Lisa before we pull the trigger on this deal?
Well, I mean.
Well, we're not, we're not doing it. All we're doing is.
Well, I mean, what you got, what you got to prepare is. I mean, nobody has asked her, would she be willing to take a finance job? I mean, you could get into a situation where we ain't got nobody if she walks up. I mean.
Lisa is going to be working on really changing. She's working on changing some of her position now. Anyway, will you know it, Lisa?
I'm working on reorganizing the duties. Not changing any job descriptions, not any of that, not even trying to hire anybody else right now. Just trying to figure out where we're going to go from that point. The issue that stands before me right now is if you're advertising for a county administrator, what that says is there's no guarantee that I have a job. So I start looking for a job. But that's, I mean, that's what I have to look at like because I have to protect myself on that end. So, um, you know, the, the financial part of it, yes, is definitely the core of what I do. There's no doubt about that. And so all I'm asking for is for the, the financial part of it because it's too much for one person to have to oversee all of it and stay down in the little details and not be able to see the big, big picture. So however you all want to handle that and what you think will work. But if you hire a county administrator and I'm the county administrator, what that says is I don't have, there's not a position open for me right now.
But it also, it also doesn't mean you couldn't apply for the, the job too, though.
Okay, I, I think we all agree that we need to. I mean, I think everybody agrees that it's just how to get it done. I mean, we need to bring somebody in. But we need to sit down with Lisa.
And that somebody is?
All get on the same page.
It sounds like you're making a motion to table.
Well, no, I mean, we need to move forward with this. I mean, we need to hire somebody because we're not, we're not getting the stuff done. So we need to hire somebody. It's just a question of how we're going to do it and what you're going to call it.
Any?
Well, that's the reason why I didn't, I didn't want her to feel like she was threatened. That's the reason why I thought she would make a perfect, where that would be that bridge, where she would have the, be the chief financial officer. Where she, you know, she'd have, I mean, she wouldn't be, like she's saying, looking for a job. Because I mean, she's an asset to the county too. I just, where I'm at, where I'm at with it, when we first started this the last time, I don't want it where we have, when one, you know, that one person is, got their hand on a wheel. I want that person to be able to take their hand off the wheel, go hunting, duck hunting, whatever it is somebody wants to do. And you got somebody else still got their hand on the wheel. Because every time we do this, it's, you know, I don't, I don't know if we need more Indians or we need different type of Indians. I mean, but I, I mean, if we're going to spend sixty-three more thousand dollars or whatever, then I just want to say, if I'm going to spend that kind of money, I want to see what's out there and see if I can get something, you know.
Makes kind of.
Lisa, as far as the finance, you've got that in our bag. You're comfortable in that.
Yes.
But the people you have under you cannot give or not. I mean, now, listen, you've got to speak on it.
I did rock in man, that's why I asked.
But you have the finances downed class. Where really you should, the other person should have already been doing that, has not been able to accomplish that. So you've been actually doing all the finances.
I would, I would say I do everything, that I do oversee everything, certainly like down the details. And I think there's some, there's a gap there right now that is not quite filled. And I'm not blaming that on anyone. I'm saying that right now there, I just don't have that person that I can walk away and have them do my job for a week. And I can put my hands on it. I just don't have that.
This is your, you are dealing basically eighty percent of the finances right now. That is where your strongest point is, is in finance.
Yes, that's true.
Miss Shakers.
Okay, the last time we was in this situation, we moved an employee. That's where you don't want to go into second session, so if I'm going too far with this, you better stop.
You hear your wife.
We, I mean, we are paying, I think three dollars an hour for added responsibilities. And I don't think we've, I don't think we've got the money's worth.
I think if that got back off on the position change, we're not, you're not paying that. You're not paying that extra for those extra duties, all that stuff.
But the job title and job description says finance.
Right, he does, but he does not have those extra duties on it. Um, and actually they paid him more pay grade. Because you.
Quickly, if I'm wrong then, I thought that after a degree was supposed to be something that they would.
They will, through this change, just to spend a month back up to the original. If I'm not mistaken, that's what I, I can double check this, this is more of an Ellie Brown question. But what I understand is for the original pay of the, of the finance clerk without the additional duties. And so that person will be paid that original amount, not the additional three dollars or whatever that budget.
So. So she don't have all the.
No.
Why, why did it go back?
Because.
I don't want to talk bad about nobody, you know, and I. You know, but you're an employee. But I don't think you get the money.
Before you give someone extra duties, you have to make sure that they're one hundred percent comfortable and precise and effective with the duties that they have. Does that make sense? I mean, I can get, I can get Crystal, you know, some extra work, but if I'm just covering something at her and she's not comfortable with what she's doing, it's not going to give her extra duties on top of that. Or anyone else, if I, you know, were to say, well, now I'm good at this, so now I'm going to take off five more things. But if I'm not particularly good at that one thing, I would need to start something else.
But we've been working much for you.
I understand.
Mr. Hugh?
Okay, the intent when we hired Ms. Lisa was to cross train. So we wouldn't get in any problem area like anything like that. One couldn't come to work, or another could take on. Okay, with that being said, I don't like that testing.
Okay.
Okay, we have an administrator. We're going to advertise for another for administrator. And if we get qualified, like if we had highly qualified candidates on this new bridge and we don't hire you, we don't hire from it. Would that get us in trouble? Could we get in trouble?
Well, I can't say whether we get you in trouble or not because I can't predict what someone might do. Anybody can do, make a complaint at any time. What I would suggest that might be a wise course of action if you're talking about changing someone to a different job title that you may wish to advertise for an administrator and a finance manager. Making it available for the current administrator slash finance manager to apply for both of those positions. And anyone else could apply. And the commission can then take into consideration the experience, et cetera, of people ranging from table. But if you are intending on asking this to change to just finance manager, she probably needs to get the opportunity to apply for both positions that are coming up. Should you choose to do that.
So we can, because, okay, that's a good thing.
Because if you just tell her that she's a finance manager, that's basically a motion. If it's not something, she's going to consent.
Yes, sir.
On the financial, is it, what, what is that job title? The financial clerk or what is that job?
They have two parts. We have finance clerk, we have commission clerk, and then we have myself, which is county administrator.
But, but on that financial part, we didn't just move somebody up, we advertised for the job, right?
We did advertise for the job.
Okay, so. So what I'm trying to get to.
The difference between finance clerk and finance manager.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Chief financial officer, so there's a difference. Although we don't have job description for job duties or anything set up for that.
We usually, we don't.
I think that's a good idea to secure Lisa is to, to create that other, that's what you said you needed to do.
So you're, and if I'm, I'm interpreting what you want to say. You're wanting to advertise for a financial?
Manager.
Financial.
Basically, chief financial.
Chief financial officer and a county administrator. Two different positions.
But what, that's one thing I'm saying, we already have the finance, I mean, okay, that'd be fine.
Is that, I understand, okay. You good with that?
I'm good with that.
So we have a motion on the table to advertise for a county administrator and a chief financial officer for Cleveland County. And I guess you would advertise the so many weeks, just like we typically do. And this group would interview, who'd interview. Yes, Miss Shakers?
We're going to have to look at the job description, right?
There should be a job description for chief financial officer from Steve was here and Kim told that position. The HR manager should have that job description. I would recommend just to.
Chief financial officer, that is it.
I did ask her if she had something like that because I was trying to actually find somebody. Because what I was trying, what I was seeking was a finance manager, basically, which would be a step below my position kind of between, I go between myself and the finance clerk, the commission clerk. And she did not see one at that time, but maybe I'll search her a little bit differently. Maybe she can find one.
There should be one found, yeah. If not internally, we'd be able to create one.
Okay.
Does any kind of, uh, financials need to go there as far as any expectation?
I mean, I would list the salary range.
The salary range?
But that's typical with any advertisement.
Okay.
That's a suggestion.
Is there a suggested? Range?
Well, I think, I think from our financial officer, uh, that we could position it what it is, but I don't want to be locked in on a administrator's job depending on what officer, or what we get.
But some, I guess you would say something.
Oh, yeah, let's say, let's say, let's say from no higher than what ninety? I don't know.
In a range?
Depending on what you get and what you get offered.
Between seventy-five and ninety?
Yeah.
Okay. For the county administrator. And you put the same thing for seventy-five and ninety on the, on the other two. Should you do that?
The same on the financial part?
Yeah. Or what would the range would you be on that?
Are they equal?
Depends on if they're going to be equal positions or not.
Are they, I mean, I just don't want to answer for the other, there's some, there's some questions there.
Well, I think your finance, I think, I think your administrator has to have the, the lead. I do think that.
So.
So I would go with, uh, probably, uh, sixty to seventy. I don't know what it, sixty-five to seventy.
For the chief financial, oh, for the chief financial?
Yeah, what you say.
It's going to always be stated as a range subject to qualifications and experience.
Correct.
That's because the commission may choose to pay more for experience and qualifications on one of the.
Exactly.
I don't know.
We could, we could come up with a number by looking, looking right, you know, and come up with a, a financial officer.
I just want to make sure we're clear on our resolution when we make this, Mr. Owens. So the resolution to add would be search for a county administrator or advertise for a county administrator and a county, county, uh, financial officer.
And Lisa, you bet that it's sixty-eight, right?
The, the, you talked about the position I was asking for?
Uh huh.
For all total benefits and anything, it was sixty-one.
But that was for a what? Would that was for a two-year degree, Rob?
That was a two-year associate's degree and.
But you would expect this one.
And buy them, and not just financial, in accounting.
You would expect this one to have a four-year degree?
Right.
And that you have a four-year degree?
I do have a four-year degree.
So that would be in, in the.
It would be higher range.
It would be the higher range, okay. We're good? We're in, we're just adding a resolution right now. All in favor, adding a resolution to the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You said aye?
Yeah.
If we have four ayes, it's a aye. Okay. Now, do I entertain a motion to approve advertising?
Thank you, Mr.?
Have a second? Any discussion? Yes, sir.
I mean, can we talk to Lisa and ask her if she would even entertain being a finance officer or? I mean, I don't, I don't want to end up here like we were before, when we don't have anything. You know, last time we pulled this up, everybody walked out.
Yeah. Well, I, and I, you know, I don't know if y'all want to take a recess and speak to her one-on-one or something like that. If that's what you want to do.
I mean. I've hired, hired a lot of people, but it was just me and them, you know, not, not a group.
Well, and that's the thing, you can, the government, you can do it as, you know, what we're doing it. But that's the reason why I was thinking that she'd know that her job was there, that we would change the title until we made this transition. And she, I understand.
Yes, sir, Miss Shakers.
I mean, I, I am talking to Lisa, I don't know. But I mean, if she decides, she just wants to get in a trouble, lady, we're going to be in a mess. Do you not think we need to sit down and talk to her first?
But Lisa's been working all.
Yeah, but if, if we pass this right here, she knows to get outside.
But that doesn't, if you pass it, doesn't mean that we're going to hire somebody yet.
I didn't say that. I'm just saying you're dealing with another human being and you don't know what that person is going to do.
I think, I tell you what, we can just take a little recess. Let's take a ten-minute break and y'all get a chance, one-on-one, go speak with Lisa. Then y'all come back and we have a resolution on the books. and we have a resolution on the books.
Sure.
Okay, ten minutes. All right, well, call this back to order. So currently where we're at, we do have a resolution to advertise for two positions, county administrator and a county financial officer, executive finance officer, right? Okay. We have a motion for that.
Sir, Ben, Mr. Oden, Mr. Ilse second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Yes, sir.
Okay. Are we just going to turn this over to HR? Are we going to be involved, other than doing the application, I mean, doing the interviews? I mean, I.
I, I tell you what, I.
I sort of think that the, that the job descriptions need some tweaking.
Yes, sir.
I would like to have Terry or Laura or Emmett and Terry or whoever maybe go sit down with attorney and talk with Lisa and just sort of tweaking and pass it back to our members to see if we see anything that needs to be put in there.
Descriptions, you have to get those ready.
Because I don't want, I don't want somebody else to ride it without us knowing what's in, you know, to have a clear understanding, and I want my attorney to make sure we have that clear understanding.
But do we need to talk about that? We'd base this resolution, we don't want HR to go out in the morning and send us out.
No.
You need to state when you want the advertisement to go out.
You guys, can y'all, what can I get, take what, two weeks?
Yeah, I'd say two weeks.
You can take two weeks, go over it, then Roger and I will go through it too, and we'll give y'all our input, then y'all get a run. And Jason? I'm fine with them two, are you Roger?
You.
Okay.
You give us two weeks to put it together, and then we'll turn it over, but, you know, send y'all, send out everybody a copy, and then we'll post it. Good, Jason?
Lisa, can you bring it to us?
Do we, do we need anything for that? Do we need another resolution or?
I need another resolution.
I'm sort of gun-shotted from there. Way back when, when the next day, some people got hired one time, and that probably cost years off my life, because many of them.
Well, I think, I think, you know, I gotta, I think Lisa needs, I, I think that she would be good if she, I think, I think this is the best way, I think it would be great.
As long as everybody knows it's not going to help for final approval.
How much can Lisa be involved in helping us fix it?
As much involved in as you want.
She's your county administrator. She's still a administrator, and we can still fill all that.
She's your county administrator.
Okay.
I think we have cleared path.
All right, so any other questions for, for Lisa? Maybe the lady, you got anything, lady?
I do.
Any questions for lady?
Lady, you're going to like one of his events.
That way we, because I, to be honest, we got a rough meeting, I haven't really done a technical read on it.
It's in my email inbox, may I read it? I haven't covered that, so yes, the board just.
Yeah, that's fine, I just want to make sure.
Mr. Oden, anything?
Only update, one issue from last month on the watershed issue. I did prepare a response letter back to that assistant attorney general that was working with the committee. That went out last week, so I haven't had any response, but I did prepare to send that letter last week.
I was just curious, you know, I know there's something in the Anus Star about the dams and, does that have any linking towards this?
I didn't see the article.
Yeah.
That is a friend of Shark Blocker or something, that's a five oh one C that does stuff, I think, one I thought was.
Yeah, the way I understood it, it was in Anus Star, you know, and we'll look at the grant money, and I didn't know if it tied into those dams or not. Wasn't clear.
Good question. So, I think that legislation is.
There is.
You have to, you have to, so you have to, and it's not just these watershed dams, it's the private dams.
Oh, is it? It wasn't clear.
And it says state.
But that's one side, do they all?
And one of the things I said in my letter back to the assistant attorney general was that, you know, if in fact it is the county's responsibility, the county doesn't have the money to expend. If you want to get the legislature to allocate monies, we can get past it before we certainly will discuss that. We don't, you can't spend money, it doesn't, doesn't exist.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, come and stand. We'll see you in this time. Okay.
Has, has my roger's office reached out to you, or have you?
Yes.
In the last two emails I've sent to him, replied to, and my phone calls, I'll call you back, and they haven't come back.
Any other questions, Mr. Oden?
No, but.
Old business. Yes, sir.
Uh, the extension office has got some good programs that they got coming up. Uh, one is coming up from Auburn University, they're going to come up and show the, the Eagles, you remember, you remember what's dinner, Terry, they had the Eagles dinner was in Auburn, where they come up, did you, didn't you go to that class? You remember that?
I don't understand the language.
Well, anyway, they're going to bring, bring them here, and it's going to be on the, I'm just letting y'all know that we're going to have a couple classes from our extension office up here, so it wouldn't be a conflict. But I think they really want to do it out here on this back deck, but I told them, hey, if you're bringing kids in, this is what this place is all about, so everybody's good with that?
Is Jay, do you wear the jeans that Jay just saw?
Well, I think it's there today, they, they don't have anything planned, so I don't think that we got, I mean, we, we use it all the time anyway, for different things, but this is county, it ain't like I'm bringing some by the.
I was just wondering if they need to be aware that it's being used or.
Well, I mean, I probably see the ones that's using it, because it don't never get used very, it might warm off all, so, I, I don't know if we need to, I, they don't matter to me, that we just, if you want, let them know that the extension office is going to be getting classes, and they probably, if it's, if the weather permits, they're just going to do it on the back deck. But they said they might need to go in and sit down and make use the kitchen, and I sort of, well, I don't mind from being on this side, but it's why I open up, they're using square to go, so.
Tell them, kids own squirrels.
I don't know what it is, them squirrels will eat everything I own, my truck, they eat all the wires off my truck, and I don't know how many, but I cannot get them, you know those little traps? I cannot get them to get in, and I've got special corn, special butter.
They, they're pretty smart, because every time one gets on my deck, I shoot it.
Well, right.
And then, then it'll take six or eight months for it to get on my deck.
Yeah, well, Robbie, I called Robbie, he said that in the city half, from his understanding, because I got a little old can, but there's just so many, there's just so many, I mean, it's just unreal. But he says that.
There's some kind of, they might turn pests or something, you can get rid of them.
Yeah. We got that little long time, we got that little long time, we get rid of them.
With them pests, they're in office, you might wind up eating them.
Yeah.
I ate a bunch of squirrel in my day.
It's going to go on until break.
Before, before we adjourn, is there anything else?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
There was a layoff, but she brought us a proposal for the staff.
Yeah.
And she laid off, so we need to make that decision, I guess, next month.
Do you want to know how much it is?
Fifty-two. That, what, that what I'm asking is, have we, we need to find out what we're spending versus what this one's going to cost us, five, fifty-two hundred.
Somebody has borrowed one to stay, I could have signed the check for them.
I think she's supposed to admit that it was not feasible, was the lawsuit, that power.
It was not, well, I really get asked for, so. Just so you should explain a little bit.
Anything else? Before we adjourn, I'd like to make add, add an amendment to your adjournment. And I'll ask Mr. Oden to read it.
I've got it actually written up as new business item J. Whereas it has come to the attention of the commission that one of our dedicated county employees passed away this past weekend, and whereas the commission wishes to recognize his twenty-one years of service to Cleveland County, and whereas the commission wishes to dedicate the February twentieth, twenty twenty-four commission meeting in honor of Marty Thunderburg and his family. Now therefore, the Cleveland County Commission hereby dedicates the February twentieth, twenty twenty-four commission meeting in honor of Marty Thunderburg and his family to recognize his twenty-one years of service to Cleveland County.
So would this thing be best as amendments to the resolution?
I like motion.
Exactly.
Okay, all in favor, add, say aye?
Aye.
May I entertain a motion, pass it? Or we pass it?
Passed it.
Second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye. I, I, I just thought something else. How about, the Juneteenth holiday, did you figure out, was that a state holiday or an Indian state holiday?
Well, my understanding is the legislators are supposed to go down, that she didn't, that the governor didn't have the authority to make it a state holiday, so undoubtedly the legislators are going to have to pass it, so when it was presented to us, you know, it's like, oh, we're supposed to recognize all state holidays, but now what we're finding out is, unless she gets enough votes, it's got to go through the house, and so it's not.
So you think we just need to leave it like it is until Lisa says the vote?
That's what I would do.
Because it is a federal law, it's so recognized as a federal law.
We can just do it like this, make the note float.
I can ask a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I was just curious about that. So like Callan County, they have Juneteenth, but they also have the Confederate Day. Why do y'all not do both, like in this county?
It's weird, they, they.
I'm just curious.
I think as a county, we do have probably more holidays than any other county. Fourteenth, is that right? And we, and I believe it got that out because they started taking Christmas Eve and Christmas Day to holidays. So that threw it up to fourteenth, so, and when the Juneteenth come around, we didn't know how to, how to handle that without, we worried about, asked Mr. Oden about that.
Didn't we drop one and took that one off?
We dropped one.
We dropped two Confederate, made one of the floatery, made Juneteenth.
We dropped Jefferson Day, today, and Confederate Memorial Day, and one's Florida Day, and one's Juneteenth. So, then you get that question, what, you know, we're open when states close to it, which can cause a little bit of problem with county offices, especially at times when we, in my office, has to have help with tags or something like that. It's mine, or they can't be driver's license.
Well, no, but they are, I listened to it, so, is what it is.
I think we just have to address it.
Yeah. And it might pass, it might not.
If we could get a copy of that right there, and maybe we can get her to put it on some paper or something.
Lisa, did you get my information on that Adam Johnson?
I do have this question, I have it in the folder, I didn't know.
Yeah, I, I, I added his name to that, because everybody can see it when they sign it off.
Okay.
Got a very typical about having that letter over there.
I'll be putting that information more or less in that, too.
Oh, do, you know, I, I, be happy, I'm already going for it, really do.
I didn't know it was Saturday.
I didn't either, but it's June almost Thursday, a photo, and I think two o'clock, or one or two o'clock is, two o'clock is the place.
Yeah, that's.
Drop this.
I remember watching the journal.
Okay.
Wait, wait, just, I thought something, this is. There's something to talk about, why isn't it?
So you're not bringing it up next month, because that's three day old chili, waiting on me.
It's not like.
You're talking about, it's on the juniors, you're talking about.
What's that?
No, no.
About chili?
We need to talk about the books.
Well, that's why, yeah, his name, that's not good. I mean, I just, you know, being that he just has patches on, I just want to.
Don't you have a few words? Hello?
So, this is our.
Well, we've already got a set of, we're waiting.
We need to.
We've already cleared.
Okay.
We, we walk.
Okay.
Come at least, I'm going to, you know, lots of courage, follow the issue.
Yes, sir.
Could, could we have the, could we have the lunch back?
Talk to us?
No, we're talking about being the action.
Yeah, we'll just play the part of it.
Being the action.
We can ask him to come, they'll answer to us, so.
Laura, what's his hours at that bill?
They're supposed to be there, hi.
They don't answer the button.
Oh, I'm saying in front of the bill.
I already wrote down the time.
Nine, for nine to twelve.
That might be wrong, because I said make sure they weren't.
Different now.
He called, because you know now, a horse, has everybody called us?
Oh, I never believed it.
It's like, it never stops, you know, and I said, I said to that lady, I said, well, ma'am, I said, can you say age? And I'm a low-income worker now, too.
You know what? And somebody said unto me.
Me?
I, I tell you, I said to you, remember the lady that came? I have her phone number. That's who I said.
I got you the job.
Okay.
I love that.
I need a second, I need a second, I need it. We got a second, all in favor, say aye? We got a aye?
I don't have the chili, so I don't know.
He's over, he's over the buzzer, it's like two or three.